It is six P M. This is an eight-member board appointed by the city of South Fulton's mayor and council to hold public hearings to make recommendations on rezoning, use permits, and concurrent variance application, comprehensive land use plan maps, and amendments to the zoning resolution. Citizens may speak for or against zoning issues, and each side will have up to ten minutes total to present any case. The Planning Commission's recommendations will be forwarded to the city's mayor and council for final decision on the fourth Tuesday of the next month. We will proceed with the agenda. Ms. Parks, can you please call the roll?
Chairwoman agree? Chairwoman maybe?
Yes? Oh. Right, I didn't think you called the chair, but, oh, yeah, it's present.
Commission Hadley?
I'm present.
Commission Perry? Commission Jones? Commission Walters? Commission Williams? Commission Devine?
Here.
Commission Wiggly?
Yeah, okay. So with no old business, we'll move to new business. Where is the approval of the minutes?
We don't have the minutes ready for this meeting, so we will have the minutes presented at the next meeting.
With no old business, we'll move to new business. Just a quick reminder, there will be ten minutes for and against each case. There's one case that we're going to be hearing about today. And when you come up to leave your comment, please state your name, address, and the district that you live in. Number one, a public hearing is considered Z twenty-two dash zero one one. It's requesting to rezone from M two heavy industrial to C U P community planning unit. And it's been deferred by staff, so I will now entertain a motion to approve the deferral.
I believe that we defer Z twenty-two dash zero one one. A request to zonings of M two heavy industrial zoning district to C U P zoning district to construct sixty-two single-family residential homes on seventeen half acres of land.
I said it there.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Ms. Parks, can you please call the roll?
Chairwoman maybe? Commission Hadley? Commission Perry? Commission Jones? Commission Walters? Commission Williams? Commission Devine?
Yeah.
Commission Wiggly?
The ayes have it. Now we will move on to item two, public hearing is considered U twenty-two dash zero one zero. And it's a request for a special use permit for the operation of a hair salon within C one limited commercial zoning. I will now entertain a motion, oh. Ms. Parks, or Mr. Hall, is there?
So, before we begin this presentation, let me introduce those who may not have had an opportunity to meet the new planning and zoning administrator, Trajan Singletary. He is going to be making the presentation today on behalf of the Planning Division. And so, this particular item, as was indicated, is an item that's located at fifty-six-ten O National Highway. After the staff makes the presentation, Madam Chair, you can then open up the public hearing.
Alright, so as Chairwoman stated, the case number is U twenty-two dash zero one zero. The address is fifty-six-ten O National Highway. The applicant, Mr. Oliver Wilford of We Style Suites, is requesting an special use permit for the operation of a hair salon within the C one limited commercial zoning district. And it's also within the O National Highway overlay district. The subject property, again, is located at fifty-six-ten O National Highway. The proposed subject, the proposed project includes a maximum of twelve leasable suites for licensed beauty and barber professionals. It's also located in District Six. Just to give you all some background information on this case, the subject property went through rezoning in twenty-twelve from C one to C two by Fourteenth County Board Commissioners. Since the city's incorporation, the city site has been rezoned back to C one limited commercial. At the location, there is a building that has been used for commercial uses such as law office, limousine services, and other retail services. Within a one-mile radius of the project location, there are approximately ten tier hair salon and barber shops, which will be shown later in the presentation. The building has a frame to the O National Highway, and again, located within the O National overlay district. The proposed use is contained in a three thousand five hundred and thirty-four square foot building. Here you will see the future land use map, the future or the comp plan as we will section. The comp plan designation is regional live work, which is in compliance with the applicant's request for the use as well as the current zoning. And the star represents where the project is currently located. The next slide here will show you the current zoning, which is C one limited commercial. And again, the star represents where the site is located. This is the area view map of the property. This is the ground level area view map, so you can see where the building is, how it is right currently, and also the parking spaces. This is the proposed front plan, a site plan that the applicant submitted. And this is Exhibit A. So all yellow star indicates where there are currently hair salons and barber shops on O National within the one-mile radius. And also the red star indicates where the site is located currently. So now we're going to get to an analysis where staff did some research and chemical analysis. So the city of South Fulton, twenty-twenty-one accompanies a plan, have designated parcel with a regional live work land use destination. The city land use policy documents support the proposed use. The proposed is confirmed to the intent of the overlay district. The zoning order requires that all hair salons and nail salons must obtain a special use permit approved by Mayor City Council. Section six oh two point zero one park requirement of the city of South Fulton zoning ordinance. The applicant must provide five parking spaces per a thousand square foot of the structure, which is, which is the minimum of what they, what they're provided, which is eighteen parking spaces. So the applicant has proposed to provide twenty parking spaces, which is over what is required by the code. The applicant is proposing a maximum of twelve salon, cell salons that will be, again, leased out to beauticians and barber professionals. The proposed use, the proposed project will create opportunities within the area and provide services that potentially will bring clientele from outside of the city boundaries. So here, we get to the staff recommendations. Staff recommends approval with four conditions. And the conditions are as follows. The proposed use and layout shall be within the general conformity with the site plan submitted by the applicant dated February fifth, twenty-twenty-one. Second condition, the applicant must submit a parking plan prior to receiving a C O or certificate of occupancy. Third condition, the applicant must obtain a business license prior to opening. And the last condition, and fourth condition, the applicant must maintain the property and keep clean of the debris. And Chairwoman, back to you.
Okay. We will now entertain a motion to open public comment. So second.
I'm sorry, public hearing. Open a public hearing.
Oh, okay. Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Alright, with that, Ms. Parks, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hadley? Commissioner Perry? Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Walters? Commissioner Williams? Commission Devine? Commission Wiggly? Chairwoman agree?
I don't have a vote, but, thank you. Is the petitioner present?
Yes, the applicant is here.
Can the applicant come up and share? We have ten minutes for and ten minutes ago.
So, I've owned, been an entrepreneur since I was twenty-one, I'm fifty now. And I try to do businesses that are conducive to the environment and conducive for the neighborhood, and I really be a proponent for the individuals within that community. And the business salon industry is changing like Blockbuster was to Netflix, or Netflix was Blockbuster. You're not going to have open salon suites, open salons anymore. Most of the professional individuals in the beauty industry are going to suites. And so, by seeing where the market is changing, I wanted to be at the forefront of that and bring that to the city of South Fulton. We have two other locations in Riverdale. We're opening another one in Macon. And those projects have done really well, and I've had no issues with the city or the surrounding areas. So, I would hope that, you know, we don't have any opposition, but I'm open to whatever needs to be done in Macon to work for the community.
And are there any public comments for?
Do we have any speaker cards for this particular item outside of the applicant? You have one speaker card? Is this for this, this particular item? You can approach the podium. State your name.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm Michael Van Abell, fifty-seven twenty Montelli Circle in District Six. Issue that I feel that this is not appropriate is an over-exasperation of the same type of businesses in a consolidated area. More background, if you're interested in, you see this all the time. For those of you who were here last year, February sixteen, twenty-twenty-one, case U twenty-one dash zero zero three was this exact same place. To add clarity to what I'm saying, and we look at hair salons. Bear with me. Hair salons that have O National Highway addresses are as follows. Forty-eight oh three, forty-eight one one, forty-eight twenty-one, forty-eight twenty-two, forty-eight fifty-four, forty-eight fifty-five, fifty-one twenty-three, fifty-one thirty-five, fifty-one fifty, fifty-one ninety, fifty-four thirty-seven, fifty-four ninety-five, and there's a multiple, fifty-six ten, fifty-seven twenty-five, fifty-seven thirty-seven, fifty-seven fifty-five, fifty-nine ninety, sixty eighty-five, sixty-one seventy-five, seventy-four ninety. And those are just the ones that front O National Highway, not the, the side streets. Before, the recommendation was both denied by this board and from the city council. Rational now is that it is an over-exasperation of the same type of business consolidated in a small area. You all made that, for those who were here, made that exact same observation February of twenty-twenty-one. Nothing has changed. And I think for the betterment and for the health of this community, we have got to step in and stop this continually cookie cutter business that we have. For those of you who were here last month, you had a case like this. You had a case probably this year of about three or four. This has got to stop. Urge you to help this community get back to a diversified level where it needs to be. Thank you.
Were there, were there any speaking cards for the?
Do I have a rebuttal, by chance?
You do. I just wanted to be sure, because we were, I thought we were still in for the development. So is there any speaking cards for the development, or where there is not any?
Is there anyone speaking for the development?
Okay, and is this the only speaking card, I guess? Okay. So then we move on to the rebuttal.
Just a brief rebuttal. So, if you have a, a certain demographics of, of a population, do you disallow something and do something form, foreign in, contrary to the demographics? And if the, if whoever opposes the project can give me some logical solutions and, and business-based solutions that are conducive for their, for my property, I'll be willing to do it.
And I guess that concludes the public hearing. I will now entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close public comment?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded? Staff, or, wait. Is there any discussion? Ms. Parks, can you call the roll?
Commission Perry? Commission Jones? Commissioner Walters? Commissioner Williams? Commission Devine? Commission Wiggly?
The ayes have it. And at this time, commissioners, if anyone has a question for the applicant, could you raise your hand and I'll acknowledge you? Ms. Walters?
I just, I was interested in knowing what has been doing, what is, what is at the property right now, what's been going on?
So I have an attorney in there, and I run the other suites out of there as well. So, we're limited to what we can do because small businesses not, are not getting a lot of square footage as far as office space now. So, that's just the reality. So if I propose to do a big business suite, I'd have very low occupancy based on the area.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you met with the community?
Yes, I have. I've reached out to a lot of, a lot of the surrounding business owners, as well as the people that actually own the dirt. And none of them have issues with it. A lot of them learn and support. I probably would have, it would probably have been in my best interest to bring a few of them that actually own the real estate. And never have, I've owned the property since nine, since twenty fifteen, and we hadn't had any issues. I hadn't had any issues with any of the owners.
Okay, and I, I should have prefaced my question by saying, residents?
Residents.
In District Six.
I haven't gotten a lot of response from the mailers I sent out. This gentleman is the only gentleman who's ever talked of, who's ever spoke on the project, to be frank with you. Last year, I had some people that was asking for clarification, but nothing in opposition to what I'm trying to propose. And furthermore, the committee, you guys' committee last year, approved it. It was not approved with the board.
The council?
Yes, council approved it, but went bef, went before the board. It was not approved. A lot of the businesses that are on O National, there are beauty salons and barber shops, they're not as, they are not as well-kept and as much money has been put in them as far as I've put into my project as far as the individual suites.
I guess, I guess I confused you, and I don't, I'm not going to ask an additional question. But I, I guess I was asking, so you said you have met with the residents in that area?
I have not met with residents.
Did you hold a meeting for them?
I sent out mailers and did a Zoom meeting. But I didn't have any attendance, nor that I have an email coming from anyone saying they opposed to it.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Reverend Chan Jones?
Mr. Wilford? You own the property?
Yes, I own the property.
And you've owned this since twenty thirteen?
Yes, sir.
And say again, I'm just, I was a little slow on that. What's happening in these existing?
So I have an attorney that worked out there. I have
There's an attorney's office there?
Yes, attorney's office. She's there. She's been with me for, since pretty much after I bought the property. And then I have, I run my businesses out of there. I have the other salon suites, so I use it as a storage area for right now. So, I've tried to lease it out to different small businesses, but it's just unsustainable as a, as an executive suite building.
So you, you reached out to other non?
Yes. I advertise this, did it on social media, just for executive suites, because that's the big thing now. A lot of the office buildings are chopping square footage up and making smaller spaces. And that's just, if a, if a, if a guy is making a hundred thousand dollars in a small business, why wouldn't he just incubate that into his home or one of his bedrooms at his house? He's not going to go pay a thousand dollars for an office space, just out of physical commercial advantage.
Would you agree that, that there seems to be a lot of barber shops and beauty salons concentrated in that area, even though you, you have a suite model?
Yeah, but I don't think you, I don't think they're all the same. I, I think a salon suite model is where the, where the, where the business is going. If you look at most of the models, the Solus Salon Suites, the Phoenix Suites, those, those companies are giving Class A buildings and office parks. So, I think it's, it's a part of, it might be saturated, but it's different. It's not the same. Because it's like, if you're a beauty, a barber, barber, or a nail tech, you'll have your own autonomy, your own suite. And an open salon just doesn't offer the same feeling. So that's where the market is going, to be honest with you.
Commissioner Perry?
So, given the high abundance of beauty salons in your, in, in your immediate vicinity, why choose another one?
To be honest with you, I'm, I'm an entrepreneur, right? And so, as an entrepreneur, you, you go past the distraction and you go what's asked to the bottom line. And you, and you, and you're going to do what's indicative and beneficial for the community. I think we can use this as a model, instead of having a saturation of beauty shop and barber salons, barber salon, barber shops and beauty salons, we can incubate them into one building as opposed to having all these square footages leased out to these beauty shops and barber, beauty salons and barber shops. So, that same, that same beauty shop, they might have two or three stylists. I can fit three or four, I can fit twelve in mine, so you don't have the footprint out there like you do now.
What's the difference between your proposal today and the one that the city council rejected last year?
I don't think, the, the difference is, I don't think I articulated that very well last year. Because of the, the inability to communicate on open forum, everything was Zoomed. I didn't think I had that much opposition, to be honest with you, because I thought I was on the forefront of something, because I've never had an issue with any of my buildings, right? So, I don't think I was as prepared as I should have been last year as I am now, because I know the model works.
So, if, if the, if the issue for the council was just the preponderance of beauty salons in that area, what's your response to that? I know you could say you could consolidate, but that's
But it's not the same. It's not the same. So, the, where rubber hits the road with the city, to me, to be honest with you, if I open up a salon suite, every individual unit is required to have a business license. Why? Because they operate under their own corporation. So now, instead of just having one license for that A B C salon suite, now you have twelve that adds to the bottom line of the city. So, from a monetary perspective, it's beneficial to the city. And I think this is where the industry is going. So, if I, if you don't prove me, you're going to have to deal with somebody else in the same, in the future with the same business concept.
Reverend Chan Jones?
Just one more question, because I'm trying to, trying to, I'm hearing what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
And I'm hearing the opposition in the community.
Yes, sir.
So, what, what is the difference? If, if I have ten Dunkin' Donuts?
Yes, sir.
And five Krispy Kremes and three Halls Donuts in one concentrated area? And then one gentleman says, well, I'm going to do something different. I'm going to create an incubator.
Yes, sir.
And allow twenty donut persons to make donuts, and each and every one of them own their own donut shop in this incubator. It's, it's different.
Yes, sir.
But is it not the same thing?
Still the donuts. Oh, great, great point. I love that analogy. I would say it's different because the city will be able to license those twenty individual donut makers as opposed to that one shop. And then two, I think it gives, it gives the city an opportunity to introduce something else other than all these different people opening up donut shops. Maybe we need to look at that incubated donut shop as opposed to these individual donut shops. So you don't have a proliferation, because like I said, if, if, if your demographics are ninety-one percent donut eaters, what does it mean, what difference does it make? So, I'm in a ninety-one percent African-American demographic, and we're talking about oversaturation of beauty salon, beauty salons and barber shops. I'm an African-American, African-American, who very few own the dirt on O National. So I don't understand what the pushback is, to be frank. But I respect it. I respect it.
Yeah, I mean, it, there, there's a high demographic there that wants to have their hair done.
Absolutely.
Right? But do we need two hundred of them? Because they also need seafood, they need shop, shopping centers, they need so many other things.
Yeah, but I don't see a very, a lot of the, our community members who ever come up with the, the, the money to be able to open these things up, to be honest with you. We want to keep the money in the community, right? So, as an African-American entrepreneur, I would, it would behoove me why we wouldn't want somebody who's concerned about the community. I'm not going to let the property go down. I'm not going to mistreat any of my tenants. And I'm going to make sure I have a, a great working environment to be able, to be able to sell to the tenants.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You can go ahead, Mr. Val.
I can't, I'm sorry. I just got here. I can barely see. Would you mind?
I give you a recap.
I'm just standing at the podium because I'm moving around.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
How many suites are there that are available?
So, it'll be twelve salon suites. I still have the attorney, but he's
Specifically salon suites. So you're not saying that by getting this permit, there could be two salon suites and maybe a tattoo artist and various other things. You're really thinking of every single suite being a salon?
Well, I, I don't know what the ordinance is, so I didn't even want to cross that. In my other, in my other locations, I have salon suites, body piercing, all of that, in my other suites. This, this particular project has been such a heavy lift, I wouldn't even want to introduce anything different.
So you really would be bringing in twelve?
Yes, ma'am. Twelve beauty-related professionals.
Beauty-related professionals.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay. That, I guess that's
With, with each individual suite individually licensed and taxable with the city. Whereas most salons and barber shops all are under one, they don't really get licenses because they're licensed under the building.
Mr. Val, did you have another question?
I'm going to close the discussion.
You, you're good? Alright. Is there any further discussion? Well, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve, defer, or deny.
Can I go on record as present, so that I make one?
All good?
I like to make a motion to deny.
Oh, you need to have a list.
I'm sorry?
Go, go on. I'm sorry.
The, the Oliver Wilford of We Style Suites requesting a special use permit for the operation of a hair salon within C one zoning district and within the O National Highway overlay district. I'm sorry. On zero point seven eight plus acres of land. And my reason is, well, an area that is saturated with similar businesses currently.
Do we have a second?
Do I need to say anything else?
Can you say the last part again? I was just
I just said my reason is for area, for this area is currently saturated with similar businesses.
A second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Parks, can you call the roll?
Commission Hadley? Commission Perry?
Commissioner Perry?
Uh.
Commissioner John?
Aye.
Commissioner Walton?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Devine?
Aye.
Commissioner Weller?
I'm gonna go ahead and withdraw my, um, option of voting this, cause I didn't hear the whole, um, case and including any words from folks in the audience, so.
Can you provide the vote count, please?
Yeah, I'm not, you're on.
I'm gonna, I'm not gonna vote in this one, sorry. Four, four for aye. So the ayes have it, the ayes have it, okay.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item three. Um, applicant requested to withdraw this petition on ten nineteen twenty-two. Um, and they were asking for a special use permit for the operation of a storage facility. And now we will come on to the discussion items. Mr. Hull, can I pass it off to you?
Hi. I have a question, can I ask a question?
Actually, this is technically a legal proceeding, so we don't have to answer questions after, just so it's held up in court, you know? Um, and so, but I will make sure that you get what you need after the meeting, we're almost done.
Good afternoon, um, I have a chair members of the planning commission, Derek Over, putting up the hat of the Community Development and Regulatory Affairs Department. Uh, there are at least three items for discussion tonight. Uh, the items do not require planning commission's, um, decision being, these are, these are just informational items, but they will be coming to you for an item of discussion and deciding on a decision, um, in the future. So the first presentation, I don't know how many of you all, uh, watched or attended the city council meeting last night, but I was asked to provide a overview of City of South Fulton's comprehensive plan. For those of you who may have been on the commission or active within the community, uh, in twenty twenty-one, um, as we were coming out of the pandemic, uh, as many of you all know, we engage in a full-on process to do our community plan. Prior to our comprehensive plan, prior to doing this exercise, we were under the twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan for, for Fulton family. So let's go to the first slide. I like to begin having discussions related to the comprehensive plan by thinking about Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And I flipped the pyramid on its side or, or top to bottom, uh, with the largest side of the pyramid at the top. So the comprehensive plan, which is what this presentation is discussing, is considered to be the fifty thousand of you perspective looking down at the ground level. It provides the general guidance, the understanding of what areas should be, should seek to strive to, to become um, over the course of typically fifteen or twenty years. Uh, interestingly, in the state of Georgia, your comprehensive plan can be as short as five years. And that's kind of the intent of the current plan that we have. Um, go back to that slide. But the idea behind the comprehensive plan is that, uh, it would really lay the foundation. It provides the orderly growth and development. We are a city today, today is October twenty-sixth. Um, but where will we be, uh, in two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four? The comprehensive plan provides the direction for which the city wants to move forward. No city plans to regress, we all plan to progress. And so this plan identifies a number of policy document, policy recommendations whereby stakeholders, elected officials, uh, staff members, uh, everyone that comprises a community uh, undertakes to make sure that we can progress and move the city forward. Underneath the comprehensive plan, we have community plans and overlay districts. Uh, just tonight, we heard about, uh, the proposed hair salon that is in the Old National overlay district. Uh, so these are meant to be smaller regional areas that provide specific development standards. And these standards help provide the guidance in terms of the aesthetics of buildings, uh, understanding what the general ten, ten, ten-year tenor of the area is wanting to be. Uh, and what the achieved idea is over the course of five, ten, fifteen years, however long the community plan or the overlay district is in place. The zoning ordinance is different, and this is where oftentimes people get confused. The zoning ordinance provides a specific zoning designation on each parcel. It's, it's should for each parcel, and it tells you what you can and cannot do on the land. Uh, and so where this differs with the comprehensive plan, which has the future land use map, providing some general land use descriptions, the zoning ordinance is very specific and very parcel driven. And then beyond the zoning ordinance, you have other land use ordinances, other policies, subdivision map act, for instance, is one of those policies. You have, um, building regulations that are, um, within our ordinance and our codes and other types of land use plans. And then finally, if you're dealing in something like a subdivision, residential subdivision, or even a commercial development, where you may have individual property owners, you will have conditions, uh, covenants, conditions and restrictions, so CCNRs. Or you may have an HOA that provides some general guidance at a very local level. So I mention all this because this illustration shows the hierarchy of land use policy documents. Talking about land use in a general perspective, but kind of understanding the relationship between the comprehensive plan all the way down to the local level. So for purposes of this presentation, uh, understand that the comprehensive plan is under the jurisdiction of the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. That is the state department, it provides regulations as stated there, chapter one ten dash twelve dash one dash point oh one regarding, uh, the governance of community plans in the state of Georgia. These plans can be adopted for, uh, the state, counties, uh, regional areas, uh, men, local municipalities, unincorporated areas, quite frankly. Uh, and it's meant to be an important, um, state of interest related to health and economic vitality, specific to cities and counties that make up Georgia, related to the state's economic prosperity. The specific local benefits include, uh, fact-based resource for local constituents. So not just elected officials, not just staff, not just residents, but business owners. Not every person that has a stake in the city of South Fulton is either a resident or a business owner. They may be a large landowner, haven't developed the land, but they are as much of a stakeholder as a person who resides in the city or operates in, in a, a business in the city. Uh, but in terms of the local benefits, creates an environment, um, for investors, property owners, taxpayers, and the general public. Specifically helps local governments to recognize and then implement important economic development and revitalization initiatives. And what's clear and what's keen on this, um, creation of the comprehensive plan in the state of Georgia is that it really is predicated a lot on economic development. Again, my initial statement was, nobody plans to have a city that is in recession. Everybody is looking for the progressive nature of the future of the city. Excellent. Uh, these are just some general requirements related to the state law and the standards and the procedures for the comprehensive plan, uh, for local governments in Georgia. The standards and procedures emphasize preparations of plans that help each local government address its immediate needs and opportunities while moving toward realization of its long-term goals for the future. So again, the purpose is to have a robust stakeholder engagement process, formulate policy recommendations, and then implement those recommendations on a long-term basis. In order to maintain qualified local government certification and thereby remain eligible for selected state funding and permitting programs, each local government, including the City of South Fulton, must prepare, adopt, maintain, and implement a comprehensive plan as specified in these standards. Now, I just wanna pause for my presentation. How many of you, the, uh, planning commissioners and the individuals in the audience, how many of you participated in last year's efforts for the comprehensive plan? You can just raise your hands. So we have several members of the board, anybody in the community, we had individuals in the community. So the intent is to bring everybody that's a stakeholder in the community together to come up. There are, as we always say, winners and losers. There are things that people want that generally may or may not be supported once the policy documents are, um, finalized. So let's look at the required elements, and then we're gonna talk about what our plan has versus what are the required elements. Keep in mind, our plan was done, uh, to a great extent by Atlanta Regional Commission. Um, at the time, there was, as you probably are aware, a little instability in the department. Uh, and so part of my understanding and talking to ARC, the reason why we have kind of a minimum plan, uh, is because that there wasn't really a champion in the, in the community of other department to make sure that we had a more robust type of engagement process and then to be able at a staff level to provide the recommendations. So per state law, the required elements are as follows. The planned elements must include community goals. So those are, what are the goals for long-term stability in the community? And this is required for any and all local governments. There has to be a strategic effort to do a SWOT analysis. So our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And we identify those needs and opportunities. And, and that is really what sets up the policy recommendations. Understanding the needs of the community, understanding where you wanna go, recognizing what your assets are, and building upon those assets, and building upon those things that are also opportunities. And then finally, community, I shouldn't say finally, but next is community work plan. Again, required by all local governments. And this is the prescriptive measure that provides us with the roadmap for what we are going to do. What we're gonna do in five years, what we're gonna do in ten years, fifteen years, and hopefully twenty years. And what we should see when we get to the end of a twenty-year cycle in a comprehensive plan, are policies that we identified that were going to change the landscape, um, of the City of South Fulton. So now that's kind of, that's kind of where we stop at where our plan is. Our plan has those three elements. But when you are a community of over a hundred thousand residents and growing, as you all see from the cases that you have, when you are almost at one hundred square miles, one of the largest cities in all of metro Atlanta, um, you need to make sure that you have other elements of your comprehensive plan to address the comprehensive nature of a growing city like South Fulton. So, uh, they also require, uh, capital improvement element. Uh, and this really is predicated on development impact fees. Something that you will be hearing about from me as a director and from the city, because we will be undertaking development impact fees shortly, in the next couple of months. The economic development element. So a lot of my beginning presentation talked about the importance of this plan and its role in securing economic development for the city. Why is that necessary? If you don't have an economically diverse community, if you don't have a community that understands the need to have a balance between residential, commercial, industrial, open space parks, institutional uses, one or more of those different types of land uses may carry the burden of being taxed. So that's why we look to have an equally divided, all parts divided by those traditional types of uses. Because no one type of use, no one residential use, if it's, you know, homeowners, you know, individuals that are living in, in homes, should not bear the burden to carry on all of the activities of the city. So we look to have a well-thought-out economic development element that really helps us to understand, uh, the appropriate mix so that we can generate the revenue it takes to run a city like South Fulton. The land use element identifies what the future land use map is. So we may have uses that were established five years ago that we may want to go away in ten years from now. Because they're no longer the types of uses that make our community an attractable community to live in. The transportation element. As commissioners and those of you who may be new, you have heard time and time again, particularly when we're getting, and when we're getting in subdivision plans, the issue of traffic related to our city. So although our current comprehensive plan doesn't have a transportation element, what the transportation element does is identify all the roadways in the city. It talks about alternative modes of transportation. So there should be no reason why a city our size is not more engaged in alternative modes of transportation. And I'm not just talking about, uh, public transportation, it's really, I'm talking about bicycle transportation, I'm talking about pedestrian paths, other means of trying to get to and from different places in the city. And so that's what a transportation element does. And then finally, the housing element, which, which really focuses on making sure that you have an affordable component to your housing needs in the city. So when people hear about affordable housing, they may think public housing, they may think subsidized housing. But it really is looking at housing from all perspectives. Market rate, rental, for sale, uh, different types of housing types. If it's, um, lots, if it's townhomes, if it's condominiums, if it's single-family, quite, quite frankly. But making sure that, as we talked about the economic diversification, we have a diversification of housing. Because I can look at each of you, um, on the commission and each of you in the audience, and I can tell you, if you have children, if you have younger siblings, if you have, uh, aging parents, as I do, there are different preferences for housing depending upon who you're talking to. Young people who are in college are not interested in going long. They're not interested in having a five thousand square foot house, cause that's a lot to maintain when they're trying to hop across to the, you know, the other side of the pond and go to Europe for spring. They, they have different, uh, priorities in terms of what they like and what they don't like. But what we are challenged with is, as a growing city, to make sure that we have a housing variety that speaks to all of the people that currently live here and those that may want to move in. Two other elements that I, I think are worth noting that we should add, particularly because we are a predominant community of color, is a health element that really deals with the state of health for our residents. Understanding that we have a lot of industrial activity in the city. With a lot of industrial activity, it brings a lot of truck traffic. With a lot of truck traffic, you deal with, uh, emissions and fumes and the, the impacts of how that can have on individuals, particularly those that are young or those that are aged where their immune systems are compromised. And so the purpose of a health element is to identify these areas, identify these corridors, identi- identify the environmental impacts that may exist because of our sheer nature of being a city. And be able to address and try to mitigate those things through different types of land use considerations. And then finally, parks and recreation. Having specific land use designations for parks and recreation. Right now, we don't have that in our, our, our comprehensive plan. Um, when the, I, the activity was undertaken, everything that was an existing park, everything that is intended to be a park was identified with the agriculture land use designation. Now, when we think of agriculture, we think of farms, we think of, you know, uh, preservation. We don't think about having open space and recreation. So that's something that we're gonna have to fix when we go through this next iteration of changing the comprehensive plan. So again, what our comprehensive plan has are the three basic things that are required. The community vision and goals, the community work plan, which outlines the policy recommendations, and this future land use map. Future land use map is not the zoning ordinance, it's, it's not the zoning districts that we talk about. It is a overarching map that describes the general land uses for the entire city. But what it does do is it cor- the zoning districts and the zoning ordinance corresponds to the future land use map. So when you see cases, and I don't know if we touched on it earlier today, um, we always ask the question. we always ask the question, is this proposed use consistent with the future land use map or the comprehensive plan? That's why we do it. Is the zoning ordinance, the zoning district for which a person is asking for a rezon, is it compatible? Does it make sense? Is there a, 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 a relationship between the two? And the quick example I give is, you would never see something that says industrial land use with a residential use, right? Because an industrial land use designation should never encourage the construction of housing. And it really should encourage the construction of commercial activities. But people are getting creative with flex office space, so you may have a little bit of that. But my point in mentioning that is, because of this, we try to make sure that when we do an analysis from staff's perspective, that the comprehensive plan and the zoning district are consistent, are compatible. So I won't bore you with too many more details. What I was asked to do by members of council, particularly those that have been newly elected and then those that were previously here, they didn't necessarily like, as they called it, the rush process that we went through last year. I wasn't here, so I'm not familiar, but I'm looking at the comprehensive plan and I'm seeing a lot of things that were missed. As I've talked to some of you, as I've talked to some of the members in the community, they too have expressed a little bit of outrage in terms of how the process went through. So I'm proposing to do an update of the comprehensive plan. We've reached out to A R C. There's no issue in us updating our plan, but this time we wanna make sure that we have all the stakeholders. And when I say all the stakeholders, we're gonna go into the classrooms. Because whether or not you know it, a lot of times people think we wanna get the input of the seniors. And seniors are absolutely critical, but so is our youth. Some of these same kids that are going to school right here in the city may very well become the next planning commissioners of the city. They may very well be the next elected officials. They may very well, they may very well stay in the house, the apartment that they currently desire. But we never engage that group. So we're gonna be intentional about our outreach and identify all the key stakeholders. From there, we'll establish community meetings, conduct a public participation program that's gonna occur across the entire city. From churches to schools, from H O A meetings to city council meetings. We're, we're planning to engage everybody. And then we'll synthesize all the community input, formulate the policies, prepare the draft revisions, have them out for the public to review. And again, remember when I said, there are going to be winners and there are going to be losers. There are gonna be people that are not gonna want to have any more development near them. But we come back to what's the intent of a comprehensive plan? To ensure our economic viability today, tomorrow and for years to come. So we have to kind of understand the relationship that development plays in this. We'll incorporate the final changes and then publish for public review and council consideration. And of course, as you all know, it'll come to you before it goes to council. But our purpose in sharing this, we shared it last night, the city council meeting at the request of the elected officials. But I wanted to make sure that you, being the first line of defense as it relates to land use, you are fully aware of what we are about to embark. And you represent districts and just as you come in contact with people, let them know that we are gonna embark on this process once again. So additional land use considerations that we're gonna do, and this is the final slide, is our current, so we're talking about doing a rewrite. The good part is, we don't have to start from scratch because we do have a plan. But we're gonna take the best of the plan and keep and just build upon it. So we don't have to start from scratch, which is why we're going to kind of accelerate our timeline. Still giving sensitivity though, to making sure that we have input from stakeholders. So we're gonna look at the land use designations. Again, we have no open space and open space recreation, parks and recreation land use designation. It's just all agriculture. So we need to change that, we need to fix that. We need to discuss the consistency between the cop plan and the zoning ordinance. We have commissioners in this city, parcels that have no zoning districts. Now I know that may sound surprising to you, it was surprising to staff and me. But there are certain parcels in the city that have no zoning districts. We can't find a zone. So I'm gonna have to bring those to the commission and to city council to establish zoning districts on these particular parcels. Because we just don't have them designated. Not sure how it happened, it just happened. So, but these are some of the things as you begin to look at our policy documents and you verify with G I S, you find that they're just missing from our, our, our current policies. Text amendments. We have some text amendments that are not legal. So I'll give you an example of one. There is, and you have heard this because you've heard a case, there is a zoning district that's called S H, senior housing. Are you aware that that zoning district says that you can only, you have to be at least sixty-two years of age or older to live there? But just think about that for a moment. We have a zoning district that dictates the age of a person. That has no legal land use connection. A sixty-two-year-old will use the land the same way that a thirty-two-year-old would use it. I mean, it doesn't discriminate. And so that in and of itself is not an enforceable type of development standard. How would staff and I be allowed to enforce that? We would have people to submit their driver's license to us every month to say that this sixty-two-year-old lives in this district. It's just not legal. So we have to fix things like that, that we have in our ordinance. So we'll have several text amendments that will be coming up. And then as you all know, with federal law and state law, things are constantly changing. I mean, if you look at administrative things that are going on, you know, we're having to watch legislation at state level and at the federal level. Thank God we have lobbyists to help us say, you need to get your zoning ordinance to comply now with this new requirement. A new requirement that was removed from the Trump administration that has now been reenacted by the Biden administration is one that we've called an analysis of impediments to fair housing. Under the Trump administration, that is a document that all municipalities have to submit to HUD if you receive HUD funds to make sure that you are affirmatively furthering fair housing. Making sure that you're not promoting discrimination in housing, in essence. Trump administration removed that. Biden administration has now put that back in. So now we're like, okay, so we didn't have to do it for four years, now we have to do it for four years. So in probably about three or four months, you will see me presenting to you a fair housing impediment study that we are required to now submit. But we have to now constantly monitor those types of things so that we can update our policy documents to reflect it. Best practices in land use, spot zoning. Some of you may know what that is. We don't discuss it enough, particularly in a city that's growing like that, like we are. And that basically is, everything around an area has the same or similar zoning district. And something in the middle of that now takes a totally different zoning classification. That is called spot zoning. As planners, we look down on that, we discourage applicants to not do that because it creates incompatibility between existing and well-established neighborhoods and then some new project that's trying to come in. And then finally restrictive areas. So we are fortunate to have a lot of trees. I have ne- you know, I moved from California to Georgia and it, and I grew up in Arkansas. And it reminded me of growing up in Arkansas when I got here and I saw so many trees. But oftentimes, the trees are buffers between some of the industrial uses, some of the, the extensive roadways that we have that may carry a lot of noise. And so I was thinking, okay, we need to maybe have restrictive areas where in the future, these areas will not be developed. They will stay as, you know, green space areas, if you will. They will be untouched and not developed. And so just making sure that we consider kind of all of these things. So as we start out this new, this new fiscal year, we started out a new fiscal year October one, these are gonna be many of the things in addition to the current planning activities that we're gonna be undertaking. In addition to this, I don't know if I included the commissioners. The city council members said that it was quite overwhelming. I sent out a list of twenty-five topics that the community development department is going to undertake in a series of community meetings. So you met my staff at the last meeting. We're gonna start having community meetings on every topic imaginable. Talking about affordable housing, talking about transit-oriented development, talking about cottage homes, talking about density bonuses and requirements, talking about the difference between a comprehensive plan. We're just gonna take it all to every imaginable place in the city because we think we need to help educate our community. A lot of people may think that they know until they really understand the full picture. So we're gonna take focused topic areas and just have an hour-long presentation. Provide some food, have some moment for dialogue and then move on to the next topic. And the, and, and the idea and the intent is just to simply educate the community on what other communities are doing in metro Atlanta and what we can do here and maybe to clarify some misinformation related to just what people think versus what it really is. So that concludes this presentation. I wanna stop and ask, are there any questions? And that was a lot of information, hopefully you found it helpful. Yes?
When you are, and I applaud you for what you're about to take on, which is, is needed. However, and you've already considered this, you already have a plan for it knowing you. Looking at the demographics of our various communities and with communication being one of our biggest problems, i.e. living in a senior community where the limited use of technology, just consider reaching, getting to those people however you decide you're going to do that. And the millennial communities, you know what to do with them already. So I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
And I would be remiss if I didn't say, we are being accompanied by my colleague, our colleague, Jacqueline, who is in our communications department. And she has been helpful quite a bit in kind of understanding what we're trying to undertake and to be able to identify what the needs are for these different stakeholders. Because you're absolutely right. The way that I just had this communication with you today is probably not the way I would have had the communication for a senior. Because, you know, I live with an eighty-one-year-old and I know what my mother can tolerate related to having high-level discussions. Not to say that she can't comprehend it, but I just understand there are certain things that she just wants to know. And as she says, Derek, you can leave all that other fluff out, just tell me the basics. It's like, okay, fine, this is what this means. So yes, we're gonna do that, you know, we, we don't have a large Latino population or individuals who may speak English as a second language. But for those that we do, we will be willing and open to have this information shared in Spanish if that's the preferred language of choice. There may be individuals who work two jobs, who may not be able to attend a meeting. So if we can catch them at church, Reverend Jones, or, you know, the mosque, wherever they're going, we're willing to meet people where they are. You know, we had a, a, a presentation for, you know, a salon studio. We know that, particularly in the black community, a lot happens on a Saturday morning, particularly with the fellas, but also with ladies as it relates to having your hair done. And so just meeting people where they are, where they are, identifying the level of comfort that they need in, in order to understand the process. What I want people to say is, okay Derek, that's enough community outreach. You've given me too much information. I, I personally think that can never be enough, but at some point you do have to do the work. But I don't want people to say that they never had an opportunity. So the intent is to just really understand the needs of the community and just schedule these meetings to be very personal, personable, but to have them, to have open dialogue and discussion and to talk about what can take us forward. Any other questions?
When do you plan to go live with Cascading Communication?
You know, my staff probably feels like we're doing it now.
Well, yeah, yeah.
You know,
Outside of this room.
Yeah, we're, you know, we're, we're having an event on Friday, we'll talk about that a little later. You guys have the flyer for the Old National L C I. That'll be wrapped up into our, our comprehensive plan. And you will hear actually from the consultants, I'm gonna give just a brief, brief presentation tonight. Let's go to that next. On the O C I, the Old National Highway L C I. This was a grant that we received. It's primarily in districts five, six and seven. But you know, I, I tell people and, and it, and it really is no disrespect, but you have to, I tell people, you have to understand the role that I am in, the role that the staff is in. We don't discriminate against districts, so whether it's in seven, whether it's in one, we're gonna promote the entire city. Understanding that you have been appointed by individuals as council members represent certain districts. When we go out into the community, we don't typically say, I'm the per- you know, it, it's typically when you meet someone, I'm a council member, I'm a planning commissioner for the city of South Fulton. Then you may talk about the individual district, but overall, we represent the city. And so I say that to say that, you know, while it may be in five, six and seven, there's vested interest in one, two, three and four to make sure that it succeeds. And so what this particular initiative is, is a documentation of what exists on Old National Highway. Not only in the city of South Fulton, but that's the primary area, but also a little bit of College Park. And it is meant to reimagine, and I use that term a lot. Reimagine what Old National can look like with some investment, economic investment, with some shared ideas and goals, with some hard discussions. My staff will tell you, with, with them, I always have what I call C Cs, crucial conversations. They don't like it when I have crucial conversations, but sometimes you have to have it. And we have to tell people the, the honest truth related to economic development, particularly in African-American communities, and what the expectation should be. I will never say that Morton's or McCormick and Smith can never come to the area. But right now, today, tomorrow, they will not be there. So we have to do a lot of improving for them to even consider, if that's what you wanna do. Cheesecake Factory, you know, if that's what you wanna do. California Pizza Kitchen, it's gonna take some work, collective work to get us there. So that's what this is for. Let's go down a couple of, of slides. So the idea is, as, and many of you have probably been involved with this, we've had several community meetings being led by the collaborative firm that have kind of done an assessment of the area. They have talked to the community, talked about what their wants and needs are. And then realistically, they began talking about what can be achieved, short-term and midterm, long-term. So there is going to be a one-hundred-day implementation and everybody's gonna have to get along. There'll be a role for planning commissioners, I made sure they write down a B C, right? So as planning commissioners, your charge may be, whether you live in five, six and seven, your charge is gonna be, when you talk about some of the new initiatives going on, here's what we have going on in, in, in this area of town. And here's the potential of what can be. And if we can do it in Old National, we can replicate this in other places as well. Because we know that that, that has happened. But it means creating public-private partnerships, looking at what our existing assets are and building on those and then making sure that we have an agreed-upon vision for the area. And again, there are gonna be winners and losers. You know, I've been in situations where I didn't win a game. I just came back from homecoming to Hannah. And it was great to see everybody, but we didn't win. We played University Ridge, got beat forty-one to ten, right? But the week before, we played Albany and we won thirty-eight to thirty-seven, or thirty-seven, thirty-six, whatever it was. So it was a great feeling to not only go to homecoming and see classmates and, and, and revisit the campus and everything, but I realized that the odds were against us. I still walk away, you know, prideful, having had a great experience. And that's what we want each of you all to do. There are going to be times where we can't get to what we want to, even in the, in the long-term future. But with continued But with continued support, uh, being open-minded, understanding that we can't get everything we want right at this moment, we will eventually at some point get there. Go to the next slide. So what they're really undertaking, I think there are four catalytic site design areas. Um, three of them are in the city, one is in College Park, or it might be two of them are in the city and one is in College Park. There are three or four. Um, but the idea is to reimagine this area. You know what it looks like now, we know all those large expansive parking lots. The buildings sit all the way back, the parking lots are never full, ever full. Mary Jade Lodge could come and those parking lots would not be full. I mean, they're big, right? So the idea is to reimagine that space. How can you use it to make it more friendly? How can you use it to get the needed retail that we so desperately want? It's gonna require density, you know? We will, if we have, we'll talk about that. Retailers are not coming, even in this post pandemic, post pandemic period, they're not gonna come if you don't have the rooftops. So it might mean that you change the way in which Old National looks today into a denser area and certain areas to support the needed commercial activity. Transportation strategies. So, um, I have a transportation background. We call them road dives, everybody at some point wants to be on the dive, right? What does that mean? You lose weight. So when you translate that to transportation, it means you lose roadway. And so, uh, Old National is, is it three lanes in each direction? Four lanes? Three lanes, probably about three lanes in each direction. Two, oh, is it two? Is it just two? Oh, is it just two?
You guys are turning that middle.
It's two, at least for most of it.
Two, and then there's a middle one.
They treat it like it's four.
Okay, right, exactly, just like it's a freeway, they treat it like two eighty-five. Um, so there may be some activities that are done to lessen the speed and just take away from just the sheer nature that this is almost a freeway, right? So that includes adding some landscape features, adding some branding features, adding some public art. Everyone likes public art and doesn't have to always be graffiti, as I always say. If they give in the black communities, they don't have to always be graffiti. I mean, it could be, you know, abstract art that really attracts and speaks maybe to the area or whatever. But the purpose is to make sure that they consider landscaping enhancements and public art and other design elements that will have people to be less concerned about rushing to get to work and enjoying the environment. Cause I've been told how Old National used to be and how lively and bustling it used to be. Uh, and how it looked totally different than what it is now, you know, strictly automobile related. How about having some bicycle lanes? How about having some walking paths? I know some parts of it don't have, I think I was told, they don't have sidewalks all the way down, they're not consistent. They need to be repaired. Uh, and so just making sure that they have these types of quarter improvements. Next slide. So of course, uh, you know, the public environment, uh, public involvement piece uh, has been a great focus of this particular project. And so in terms of what people have heard, promote small businesses, arts and cultural events. When I had a discussion, uh, just last week with the, with the team about this, sometimes it's just about programming. You know, you can have, um, a space that is like one of those large parking lots. But imagine for a moment you put out some ring turf and you add some lawn chairs and you have some lights hanging and then you have a couple of kiosks that are selling coffee. Or you have a free book exchange. That then transformed the whole area and you haven't really spent that much money. You haven't really done anything to really change the nature, it's just about programming. And then you add some seating, you add some safety provisions, and now you have transformed what was always a sea of parking. Half of the stripes are already gone, you don't know if you're in your lane or not. Because the, you know, the, the owner of the property hadn't restriked the property in years. But now you've transformed it, it looks totally different. And so, you know, just, just taking a collective approach. What are all the things that we can do? We can do programming, we can do some landscaping, we can add a couple of new buildings here. We can add all of this stuff and collectively they begin to change the trajectory of the entire area. So, uh, the, I, the timeline for this is, they've done the existing conditions, they've done the market study, they've done the catalytic design and illustration, illustrations. They're now working on the implementation plan. So we will be bringing this to you, the reason why I wanted to have this discussion, you will see this next month. Again, you are the first line of defense for the city when it comes to land use policy documents. So you will see this sometime in November. They're prepared to come before you and they'll have a draft of the plan with the intent of adopting it, um, subject to some changes in December of this year. So consider yourself, uh, duly noted, notified that, that you will be seeing this. Uh, and, and again, I'm sure many of you have participated in this. Let's go to the, um, uh, next slide, I think it'll be my final one. And that is the event for Friday. So in front of you, you have the. Uh, in front of you, you have, um, what is gonna be the third and final meeting for the Old National LCI. That is scheduled for tomorrow. So if you're able, I encourage you to go if you're gonna be in that area. Uh, if not, contact one of your colleagues, wish your districts five, six, and seven representatives will be there or will be around. Um, but it really will provide you with some additional information, um, related to this initiative and how we can duplicate the efforts moving forward.
I just wanted to say that I was born in South Fulton a hundred years ago. And at one point, I think it was seventy, and I wasn't being moved, I was actually been looking for. But in seventy-eight or seventy-nine, Old National Highway was a contender for the Guinness Book of World Records, for the most restaurants. So when we look at, so many times when I hear things, I'm going back in my old mind and remembering, you know, that quarter and what it can be and what it should be. So we do need a Morton's.
So my, my last, my next to last comment is, um, this month is National Community Planning. And, you know, as a former national officer of the American Planning Association, I want to first start off by saying happy National Community Planning Month. Um, I told council last night in the public, you know, when you see a planner, hug a planner, kiss a planner, cause it's their month, so. But in, in light of, and, and in honor of celebrating National Community Planning Month, we're gonna have what I call the State of Community Planning on Friday. Now, I know you guys look like you have a busy lifestyle. Uh, Mr. Hadley over there is probably already thinking what he has planned for the weekend. But if we could just have you all to, um, show up on Friday if you're scheduled, you and your family are invited. We're gonna be at Southwest Arts Center. And this is going to be an opportunity, I don't think you've seen this before. And I bet if I asked you, just kind of the way in which we've done traditionally the, um, agendas and how we state the projects, if I asked you, what's the top projects in your districts that you represent? You probably couldn't tell me because it's just so much stuff going on, we don't keep necessarily a track. So part of what we're doing in the department now is tracking all major development projects. But on Friday, each district will have a feature project. So Sunday afternoon needs your help. For District One, I don't know if you know, Rodney, uh, that we're building a new, when I say we, there is a developer that is building a new movie studio in District One. That project will be highlighted and the developer may be at the meeting. For District Two, we have a project called the Westwood Project, which is located on the Chattahoochee River, which is going to transform this entire community. You've not seen anything like it. Uh, it is gonna be residential, commercial, uh, it is over four hundred units, um, spread across several acres. Um, and there's some protected wetlands because of Chattahoochee River. Um, and so that's going through what we call the, or about to start the D R I program.
Where is that?
It's in District Two. District Three, already under construction. We're fo- we're focusing on the Job Corps project, fifty million dollar project that's currently under construction. Slowed down a little bit, but they're gonna get back started. But that's a major development project, fifty million dollars that they're investing right in the city. District Four, we have Cedar Park. Cedar Grove Village, it's Cedar Park, Cedar Grove Village, which has a park in the middle with a stream and then there are some high-density residential units, apartments, townhomes, some single-family homes and some commercial space. It is going through the same process review with A O C. That one I know has been similar. District Five is the Old National LCI. Um, so we will feature that project. District Six has a new Chipotle and Valvoline being built in the same area. And District Seven has a distinction of having the most hotels in all of the city. I, let me preface this by saying, the most quality hotels that you would be interested in saying, not the ones. So a new Town Place, Town Home, Home to Suites and a Town Place Suites by Marriott are go- are have started construction. So as you can see, you probably didn't even know that as commissioners, you, you've entitled all of these projects. And so I, I could go on and on, but we could, we only had so much time, so we only did one per district. Um, and, and the really, the focus is just to inspire the people in South Fulton about what's coming. You know, just be patient, you know, no one takes what you all do for granted. I mean, I certainly don't, staff certainly doesn't. But a lot of times people just don't understand what you do and what's before you. So this will be an opportunity for the community to come out and engage. Um, so that's part one. So we've invited some of the development leaders, learning about new projects. And then we're gonna talk about equitable development. I mean, I make no issue in saying, this is a predominantly African-American city. We should not be bashful about promoting equitable development. We should want to promote black entrepreneurship. That's not to say that we don't promote anybody else, but this is who we are. And so, um, as part of that, one of my closest colleagues, um, is gonna join us. He is not from the city of South Fulton, so don't hold this against him. He is from metro Atlanta. And what makes Andrew, uh, Andrew Baker unique is that he has been either the assistant planning director or the director, he's currently director, um, for DeKalb County Planning and Sustainability Month. What makes him unique is that the, the whole community development planning director's role, they're very, uh, they're very high terms. He has been there since two thousand six, so he has seen good in the vector, he's been there through several administrations. So he's gonna come and we're gonna really have a candid discussion about equitable development in black communities. He's on chair's experiences, uh, in DeKalb, uh, he has announced that he's retiring in December. Uh, he will talk about what the city should look forward to in terms of its growth in the city. He too was part of an exodus of unincorporated areas that, um, incorporated into cities, I forget, I, you guys have to forgive me, I still don't know all of these Atlanta ci- uh, these metro, uh, these, uh, suburbs as well as you all do, but, um, you know, Brookhaven is in Fulton County, but the other one's on the other side. Sandy's Ridge, is that one? Yeah, so all of these cities that are now, you know, thriving and bustling, he will talk about, well, you know, they did that off the backs of, you know, uh, DeKalb County, we kinda have a joke about that. But in all seriousness, we will talk about, you know, being a black city, being, uh, unapologetic about it and understanding what it takes to succeed over the tenure of, you know, um, your, your stage of, of infancy to, to, to the point to where you're now in school to where you become a full-on adult and you're twenty years, you know, into this as an element of what you're planning to do. So we're gonna have that discussion, um, and, um, so it'll be a pre-reception. It'll be the hour-long kind of, um, I call it the Oprah Gero conversation, so it'll be a conversation. Just mail her. And so we will be on stage and it, you know, it will be, you know. And so then the audience will be allowed to kind of, we'll ask a couple of questions and then we'll go to the audience, ask a couple of questions. So it, it's really a dialogue that we plan to do, but we wanna make sure that the attendees are engaged in the process. And then afterwards, we'll go back out into the, the foyer of Southwest Arts Center, um, where we'll have some more music and some food and just talk to some of the developers that are there, elected officials from planning commissioners. I'm sure you will have many of these people out here wanting to talk to you about your role. So, and what you have not seen, but the idea is to really, you know, promote community planning, kinda understand. You will also meet other planners, cause I've invited other planners from all over the region. And, and that's the one thing that I, I just hope that we can all agree upon. You know, I was welcomed with open arms, I'm not from Georgia, but, you know, I have such an absolute love for the city and for this area. My mother, my siblings, a number of them live, uh, in metro Atlanta. Uh, and it's important that you hear from different perspectives. Though I might not be here, it doesn't mean that I don't want to contribute to the economic, you know, vibrancy of the city. You know, so when I can, I'll shop here. Um, when I can, I'll tell people to shop here. When I can, I tell people, we are not Atlanta, we are our own independent city. Um, and the only way for you to do that is to really engage the people who are not from here. Talk to other people who live in the area and say, you know, y'all have that crime problem over there, but we don't really have that issue over here. You should try to come over and see. Um, or however you have the discussion. And so, um, you will have, you will see people from all other, um, all, other places of Georgia that will be there. Uh, and then my last comment is related to, um, it kinda goes back to what we began talking about. We have, and I just kinda found this out, typically during the end of the year, um, Mayor and Council will flood my office with requests to do text amendments and some changes. And so I've gotten an influx of requests, so we can do them. But I told them that you have to get your planning commissioners to agree to have a couple of special meetings. And so what I wanna talk to you about is, we're wanting to schedule a special meeting on the ninth that will be in person, but then also on the fourteenth that will be virtual. And wanted to see if you could make that happen. And then the meeting that we have scheduled for the thirtieth, we will cancel, uh, because we won't need to have that meeting since we've had those students. But the reason why we're asking for the special meetings, we need to get the notices for the text amendments. Um, and a highlight of one of those is, I'm just trying to think, were any of you all in the discussion? We're having some problems with some residential units being used uh, and getting around the issues of the short-term rental ordinance. Short-term rental ordinance says thirty days or less, but there are some, shall we say, unique and profitable residential uses that are leasing out rooms in their houses uh, and giving the individuals leases.
Did you mean thirty days or more? Oh, I thought you were saying what was allowed. That is, that you're saying that is what, a short-term, like by definition? Thirty days or less, okay, got it, yeah.
But now we have some uses that are, are going around that while, and they're renting rooms, which, you know, I mean, the cost of housing has increased all over the country. But it becomes an issue, um, when, um, we're not permitting the house to be used in that capacity.
It's not permitted for short-term, yeah.
It's not permitted for that type of use. It was a single-family house and we have a definition of what single-family is. Um, but now. Yes, exactly. But now the rooms are literally being leased out for periods beyond thirty days, but they don't meet the code. So we have to expand our definition of roomy house, cause that's what it is. And then that comes with some additional stipulations. So, yes.
Oh, okay.
This is a discussion session, so we can talk about.
I wanted to know if we were on camera. We are?
Yeah. Yeah, we're still recording. So those are the types of things that we have to kind of do, um, because, you know, you, you, it's, it's kinda like the phenomena of, um, lifted. lifted Uber. You know, people were traditionally used to taking taxis, that's all we knew, were taxis. And then we get lifted Uber, and now it just changes the entire game. The taxi cab companies get upset, but now we're doing, you know, shared rides. And so who, I would have never thought in my life, I would have never thought about getting into a car with a friend. You guys probably will, but I mean, now it's, it's not cool not to do it, right? So, um, we have to just kinda chain it with the times, and so the same has happened in the housing industry, where, um, single-family homes are being rented, rooms are being rented out, living rooms are being rented out, garages are being rented out, storage areas are being rented out. And once we permit it, it's too late, so we have to, you know, try to work to figure out how we can get it in. So we just have to require to have more strength and more stringent requirements in our codes. So that's just one example, we got a couple of other things we're gonna talk about. So, but the, but the meeting on the fourteenth is proposed to be virtual, so we don't have to work overtime.
Director, what time was that meeting on the fourteen, I'm trying to
Six o'clock.
On my schedule.
Fourteen.
Six o'clock both nights.
The night.
As in the day after.
In person on the night.
The day after the election.
Right, the day after the election, so we're closed on the eight, and we're closed on Veterans Day. So that, that'll give us a small window, so Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So, I mean, you don't have to vote on it, we just wanted to discuss it with you. And then on the fourteenth, it would only be for the city council-initiated text amendments, comprehensive planning. We're not gonna have any cases, we'll just have those soon.
That works for me.
That will be on, it'll be on soon. They'll get the link as well. So it'll be, the night meeting will be just like this, but the fourteenth meeting will be on Sunday. And they'll get the link. So that's all I have, I think I talked to you all.
Would you include department highlights?
Uh, but those were the
Kinda mixed in, yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
Okay, good.
If there aren't any other questions, that concludes my report.
Strong work though, strong work.
Yeah, I was now entering motion to adjourn, to adjourn the meeting.
I believe that'd be adjourned a meeting.
Any discussion, all right, there it is. Ms. Parks, can you please call her off?
Commissioner Havre.
Aye.
Commissioner Beard.
Aye.
Commissioner Don.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker.
Aye.
Commissioner Wade. Commissioner LeVon.
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.